Okay, I call to order the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, January 25th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. At this time, I would ask you to silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions. Moving on to the agenda, item one, roll call.
Bless them.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here. Item two, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, the mayor's report. In lieu of the mayor's report, in honor of a fallen police officer, Matt McLeod, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Before I move on to the city manager's report, in light of the events that happened today, funeral for Lieutenant McLeod, I am going to, I've worked with, through Harold, our city manager, in our PIO department, and I'm going to request that all businesses, all residents, schools, townhomes, churches, between now and the end of February, I ask that somewhere in your home or your business, you display a blue light to show a show of support and a show of strength for our police officers and all of our first responders. The message is simple. It's that even in the deepest, darkest parts of the night, I want an officer to turn the corner in a neighborhood and see a light of support. I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it tonight, and I just ask that you do it. We should do it 365 days a year, but I'm asking for businesses, churches, schools, even City Hall, to display a blue light in support of our police officers and our first responders. And moving on, I do want to call on, before we move on to the city manager's report, I know, Rob, you have something you want to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, last week, when our officers took Lieutenant McLeod to the city of Grand Forks, the city of Grand Forks and the Grand Forks PD stepped up and did some things for us and our fallen officer that was above and beyond, and so I would like to make a motion or a request, I guess, of the city to somehow say thank you to the city of Grand Forks, the Grand Forks PD, for everything they did, with the respect and admiration that they gave to our officers and Lieutenant McLeod.
I am wondering if we, if we have our PIO department put a letter together, and as members of the council, we all sign it.
I think that's a great idea.
Any objection? Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
And, once again, before we get to the city manager's report, without objection, item 8.1 on action items is pulled from the agenda. 8.1 is pulled from the agenda. Seeing no objections, we will move on to the city manager's report. Harold.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I guess first and foremost, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have with regards to the city manager memo that's been prepared by myself and staff. Not hearing any questions, there's a couple of things. First, I want to publicly acknowledge and express my condolences to the McLeod family and our police department. It's been a difficult couple of years, and particularly difficult here over the last couple of weeks and months, but I appreciate their resolve, and I hope that the community comes out in full support, as the mayor just recommended, and they know just how much we care and appreciate that the job that they do every day on behalf of our community and our families. Moving on, I wanted to also provide a public invitation to the council and to the public to attend our winter employee recognition event. That will be held on Friday, January 31st, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. Food will begin being served at 5:30 PM. That'll be at the Armory, the municipal auditorium, and we'll be doing some annual recognitions of the great work that our employees have been doing and providing to our community and to our organization over the 2024 year. And then, finally, a bit of good news, I'd like to invite some staff up for recognition of an employee promotion, and once that's complete, I have nothing further underneath the city manager report.
Good evening, members of council. I think, as you're aware, we had a resignation in the water and sewer department back a couple of months ago, so as of Friday, we completed all interviews with some internal candidates, and just wanted to be able to put a face to the name when it comes up, but Brian Randash is our new water and sewer superintendent. Brian, if you can stand up.
Are there any questions, city manager? Seeing none, we will move on to item number five on the agenda, and that's the planning commission. What did I do?
David Lakefield.
Whoops, I'm sorry. My bad. Sorry, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, I'll keep... Can you hear me? Okay. Jennifer will bring up some slides. We have just a few slides to go through as part of my monthly update to the council here at the meetings. So what we want to talk about a little bit today is just what the process is that we go through at year-end. So what is fiscal year-end? So this is a little bit, a little bit tongue-in-cheek. Obviously, it's the end of our accounting period. We have a calendar year, fiscal year, so December 31st is the end of our fiscal year, and it's also the end of our budget cycle. So some of the processes that we have to go through, we have a number of journal entries that we go through, that can relate to a number of different things we have this year, something of significance, the way our payroll pay dates fell, we had to accrue for a full payroll period plus two days. So when we got towards the end of December, and everybody thought their budgets were in the green and good to go, we had 14 days, or actually 16 days of accrual that still had to hit, so that was something that came up. So there's a number of journal entries that we go through at the year-end. We process all of these reporting documents, 1099S's, NEC's, miscellaneous preparation of data for the actuarial services, that becomes important. We have to go through and get information to them so we can make determination of what the contributions need to be for the upcoming year when we go through the budget process. We have the implementation of new GASB standards, if any, and there's a couple of them that we're working on this year, most particularly dealing with handling paid time off or compensated absences. Preparation of audit requests, last year, we had 194 specific requests from our auditors that someone in my department had to respond to and put information together just in the course of preparing the annual report and the audited financial statements. And then, preparation and note disclosure schedules and the things that go along with our annual comprehensive financial report. So this is just a little bit of our calendar and how we anticipate the timeframe to go through. Obviously, December 31st is the end of our fiscal year. Our goal is to close the fiscal year in our accounting system by February 19th. Then, from February 19th to March 24th, we're working on compiling all that information into our annual report. The external auditors will be onsite, March 24th, that week, and then, we hope to have the final completed report by sometime mid, mid-May. All right, some major changes that we've undergone here in the last few months, transitioning banking institutions that went into effect January 1, 2025, the implementation of GASB 100, which is the, how we handle accounting changes and error corrections, GASB 101, which is the compensated absences that we deal with, as well as our normal everyday duties that we have to carry on as well. This is just the timeline for the finance department, and this is a slide that we've recycled, and it's kind of like Groundhog's Day with us. You know, a couple of times, Harold, they said, "Well, when things slow down for you guys," well, we go in cycles, and it's like wash, rinse, repeat, you know? So this time of year, we're finishing up year-end, getting ready for the audit report, we compile that information, get all done with the auditors, and, you know, publish that, and we're already working on budgets. At that time, we get through the budget process, we compile that, we have our public hearings and our public meetings, get the budget all approved and published, and then, if we issue any debt, typically, that's in the fall timeframe, so we go through our reviews with the rating agencies and issue any public debt, and then, we're already back into year-end process or preparing for year-end. So it just seems like we're constantly on that, that hamster wheel, where we're always busy doing something or getting ready for the next thing that comes in front of us. Next slide, please. This is just a slide of some of the ongoing monthly duties, so we keep busy, day in and day out. There's always something that is coming to us that keeps us occupied, and this is just a list of some of the different things that we keep busy with on a, on a daily basis. So when something out of the ordinary comes to us, it's not that we have staff sitting around just waiting for something to come on their desk because they don't have anything to do. Typically, it's managing the time so that we put something else aside, or we find another time to deal with that. We deal with the crisis or the thing that's in front of us and adjust our time schedules to accommodate that. Next slide. So these are some of the completed special projects that we did in the last year, or we had ongoing. So we're still working on changing over the entire city to a new cashiering and credit card processing system, so we've made some headway with that. We've improved some technology, and some of this was beyond our control because it was forced to us by our software provider, so we're working through some of that. There are some advantages to it. The disadvantages is, we think it's a little bit more expensive, so we're a little bit cautious about only transitioning the cards that we need to, to process through our software system, and keeping the others on our current processing system. So implementing Tyler Payments, we've got that online already. The RFP for Banking and Insurance Services, both are in effect. We've transitioned that over, and it seems to be working pretty well to this point. There's still some technology things we're working through to integrate our systems with, but we think that we're making some headway there, too. Policy and ordinance updates, that's been an ongoing conversation, and it seems like we're always reevaluating those policies and looking for improvements to our processes, and then, we have to memorialize those and get approval from this body on how we want to handle those. The CDBG, second allocation, we're looking to close that grant out here in the next year. I think the goal is by third quarter. We'll have that drawn down and closed out, and we can put it to bed and move on to our next, our next program. Rebranding purchasing cards, we've completed, and then, the new credit card hardware is completed for the most part as well. Next slide. This is some of the ongoing and future projects that we have to work on. We're working on a bank reconciliation file that we can get electronically from the bank that we can import into our system. So instead of having to have somebody go in and clear a check every day or every other day, that we can import a file and the computer can compare the data. It's two files, if we have the check number, the check date, and the amount, and we can verify that in both files, that we can automatically clear those checks. So we're working on that. The bank electronic deposit, we're nearly there to complete that, and that's where we can essentially scan a check in. And so instead of having to have someone go to the bank on a daily basis to drop off a deposit, we can scan that check through the scanners that we have and send it in an electronic file and process the deposit that way. So it speeds up the process. We don't have to have anybody actually make a trip to the bank, so it makes it a lot more efficient that way. And in theory, we can have this work so other departments can close their batches and send us the electronic file, and they wouldn't have to send them down to us either. So it's going to speed up that returning on our cash flow and less options for mistakes as well. We have, we're ending the contract period for audit services, so we anticipate that this year we'll be going out for RFP for an auditor to do future audits coming up. And typically, we do those in five-year time periods. So we'll be working through that this fall. Asset Works upgrade, we're already to the point where that's going to have to upgrade. So when we have integrations, we need to also be concerned that those integrations also are still compatible with the upgraded software. We're working on a product, a project for Odyssey, which is the city court software that they use. It's statewide, the courts throughout North Dakota use, and it'd be able to handle online payments. So a person could go in and raid online and pay for their traffic ticket or parking ticket, whatever it might be, instead of having to call and actually do that transaction over the phone. So resident access is something that we're looking at, similar type of thing where it would be other types of payments that we could handle online throughout, that the residents could go online and handle without actually having to talk to someone. And then electronic payables implementation, this is the ability for us to go and handle payables transactions electronically so that we don't have to process as many checks and as many invoices through our office. Again, a little better efficiency. It costs us money to print checks and mail them and all of the things that go along with that, plus there's a lot of fraud associated with processing paper checks. Our finance website overhaul, our department website is a little dated. It's not very user friendly. We have the information there. It's just not very pretty and intuitive to navigate, so it's been on our list for quite some time. It's just one of those things that hasn't risen to the top of the list, so we're hoping that that will be something that we'll be able to dive into here in the next year. And then, believe it or not, we're almost five years into our Munis project. We've been live since November of twenty twenty, and we're slated for a major upgrade. And we've had upgrades throughout this whole process. When we go to a major upgrade, it's a lot more time intensive. We have to go through and do a lot of testing and look to make sure everything works. And sometimes they change things when we have imports set up. We have to make sure that all of these connections to other data systems still work, so it just takes some time. Next slide. And that's it for questions. Try to keep it fairly short, so.
Any questions? Mike?
Hopefully, a quick one for you, Dave. Thanks for, thanks for coming up. We'll, so the annual financial report, we'll see a final version in May. That's the audited version, that's the final. Will we see something on a more preliminary basis before that, before we start up some of the budgeting discussions? Will we be able to see something sooner?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, yes, and actually, I wanted to have some preliminary data for today, but we're just too early. We still have a lot of December bills for utilities and things like that, so instead of throwing data out there that isn't complete and could potentially be misleading, we wanted to hold off a little bit until we get closer to actually closing the books here sometime in February.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the city manager? Okay, moving on to item five on the agenda, planning commission. Five point one, consider the report of the planning commission. Moving on to five point two, public hearing case number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash zero three, E H C Minot Edition, future land use map amendment, zoning map amendment, preliminary plat and annexation. This is a public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of the zoning map amendment, the preliminary plat and annexation. Now is your time to step forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Daniel Stewart. I'm with D E C. I am the civil engineer for this project, made the application. Just wanted to come up and let you guys know that we have worked with your staff on this. Really appreciate all their help and be happy to answer any questions you have of me.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Continuing on, now is your opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak in favor of or against item five point two.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Ross, and members of the Minot City Council. My name is John Cutts, and I'm president and CEO of Trinity Health here in Minot. And today, I'd like to discuss with you a very important matter that will significantly impact our community. I'm here today to request a delay in approving the rezoning of land for the purpose of a for-profit microhospital in our community. This is a significant decision with far-reaching implications and consequences. It is vital that we take the necessary time to thoroughly evaluate and explore the impact of such an enterprise on our community. I urge you to leverage collective intelligence, business development, and community perspectives to ensure that a cautious and well-informed decision is made. As you consider the rezoning proposal for a for-profit microhospital, I urge you to take a step back and fully utilize collective experience from the community. This decision carries implications for our community, and we must ensure that we explore all aspects thoroughly. By taking the time to evaluate the potential impacts, you can then make a well-informed choice that best serves our residents. Employees, community members, community leaders, business leaders have approached me with questions regarding this for-profit microhospital and its impact on Trinity Health and our community. There are numerous unknowns and questions that need to be addressed in order to fully understand the necessity, benefits, and overall value proposition to our community while ensuring that we do not compromise Minot's greatest asset, our local and regional healthcare system. Trinity Health is not afraid of competition. Our community already has a diverse array of healthcare providers. If there are concerns about our organization not meeting the breadth, depth, and scope of services that we provide, we certainly welcome that feedback. We are committed to evaluating how we can enhance our services to better serve our community. Our focus has always been and remains on the health and well-being of those we serve. Over the decades, Trinity Health has made reinvestments into the community, including funding for vital resources, enhancing community assets, and supporting local events. For example, we've invested revenues into the North Coast Fest, the North Dakota State Fair, the Minot Y M C A, Minot State University, Dakota College Botno. We've provided support for area police resources and many various community activities. These initiatives reflect our commitment to enriching the lives of those we serve and ensuring that the benefits of our work remain here at home. I think it's also important to note significant concerns shared with and received or raised by our local police department, fire department, and emergency management services. The introduction of a for-profit microhospital will have substantial impacts on these critical services. It's crucial that you thoroughly understand and consider these implications as part of your evaluation process. Lastly, let us all recall that this community has had prior experiences with for-profit healthcare providers. Unfortunately, these providers prioritized profit over community well-being, extracting revenues and sending them out of state to their shareholders. Once their financial goals were met, they made their final deposits and departed from our community and then selling off the remaining real estate. In contrast, we at Trinity Health reinvest our, reinvest in our community and our organization to meet the needs and expectations of the people we serve. Our commitment is simple. Our commitment is to our most important stakeholders, our community, this community, not out-of-state shareholders. This is indeed a significant decision, one that carries profound implications and consequences for our community. We want to partner with you to ensure that every decision made is made in the best interests of our community, both now and into the future. This decision will not only impact the local community hospital, but also all other existing healthcare providers that make up the healthcare infrastructure in Minot. As a strategic partner, let's study and evaluate what truly serves the best interests of our community together. Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Continuing on with the public hearing, now is your opportunity to speak in favor of or against the proposed.
I'm going to make a special point to get this mic in front of my mouth and ask those that come up here in the future to do the same because some of those farmers are starting to go deaf. Travis Zablottney, resident here in Minot. Mr. Kutch has requested time for us to reflect and look at, gather community input, and so I decided I'd step up and provide some. I think it's a perfect opportunity for the citizens of this city to do that. I'm in support of another hospital coming into town. Contrary to what he said about a for-profit hospital, I think that they're here to look after the best interests of their customers, which would be the patients. I look forward to a day when one of my, actually, two of them in two different occasions, two of my South African laborers that were here to work that needed medical attention, they went to the emergency room and sat in the emergency room for hours and hours and hours, and finally asked me what they should do. I said, drive to Garrison. They drove to Garrison at ten o'clock at night, got taken care of, and was back home in bed in less time than they sat in that emergency room without even being asked what the concern and the problem was. That happened two times in the last two years. I look forward to the day when the concern of a hospital is more than whether or not the profits were more important than the patient. And I personally, along with others, including Representative Jeff Hooverson, went to Trinity's board, or executive staff, I should say, Dr. Sather was involved at the time, and requested on behalf of a patient that had COVID that was dying, along with their family, for treatment with hydroxychloroquine and remdesivir, or not remdesivir, hydroxychloroquine and, help me here, the horse paste, right, ivermectin, sorry, because that's what they believed would help their dying family member. And we got to the hospital, and they said, no, we can't do that, or we've taken that formulary, formulary out of our pharmacy. If you're going to want that, we just, you know, we couldn't get it, doctors couldn't prescribe it, nurses refused to administer. They came back within that same day and said, oh, we found a loophole in our policy. If your doctor's willing to prescribe it, you can go out and get it and bring it in, and we'll prescribe it. They did that, and they still had trouble because the nurses had been told that they will not do that. That man died from remdesivir, in my opinion, and in that family's opinion. We all know the stories about what that drug happened to do to people. This hospital didn't have the concern at that time for that family to, you know, meet their wishes and/or what their doctor was willing to prescribe. And lastly, I look forward to a day when we have a hospital here that will see my new three-year-old granddaughter, that a doctor will see her without going around some sort of manipulative, manipulative way, without her having to take every vaccination that's on the CDC's schedule. Because as I understand that today from my daughter, that is the requirement of the majority, if not all, it's a hospital policy, that there's forty-one-plus vaccines in their life that they have to take. That's not their choice, that's our choice, that's my daughter's choice and her husband, and I want a hospital that respects that. And so the input was, was asked for, and I'm giving it, and I fully support competition in this market for those reasons. Lastly, having sat on the pub planning commission at one time, I fully recognize that this whole decision that you have to make is, is not, you need findings of fact, right? It's a zoning issue. So all these things that we're talking about here have nothing to do with your approval of whether or not you can change the zoning, and this hospital can choose to come and work with the city to build. I'm sure you're all fully aware of that, and your attorney will fill you in if you're not, and so there's no point in delaying it. I think it's on the president and the board of Trinity to figure out, you know, what they need to do as a hospital to be competitive and to survive, and it wouldn't be the purview of this board to lock another competitor out of this town. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask or answer them.
Seeing none. Continuing on with the public hearing for those. Continuing on the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposed.
Guys, I'm going to just read off my paper. Good evening, city council members and members of the community, both here in person, and I know there's a lot watching online. Thank you for your opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Alyssa Bach, and I'm here as a concerned member of the community and a nurse who works outside of our community. I'm here to advocate for the zoning change that would lead to construction of a second hospital in our city. Before I embarked on this journey to advocate for the zoning change, I had to consider the weight of what I might lose. Any future chance to work as an acute care nurse in my home community, along with many nurses who have messaged me in the last weeks because they're afraid to stand up and talk in favor of a new hospital? However, this loss to me is worth the potential gain for access of more healthcare to my community members and for current and future medical professionals who would benefit from a stronger, more supportive, and diverse healthcare system. This is, this decision is not about constructing a new building, it's about safeguarding the health, well-being, and future of our residents and future generations. Minot is growing, and with growth, our healthcare needs are expanding. Our current hospital is often at or beyond capacity, creating long wait times and overwhelming all of our healthcare professionals involved. As a nurse, I've seen firsthand the strain this puts on both staff and on the patients. And for many, it means delaying critical care or having to travel outside of Minot to say Rugby or Garrison, Bismarck, where this can lead to worse outcomes for the patients and adds added stress to the families. The solution is clear, we need a second hospital to address these changes. A second facility will do the following. It'll improve health outcomes, faster access to emergency care, whether it's cardiac events, strokes, pediatric emergencies, with all of those time saves lives. It doesn't matter if it's a big hospital or a microhospital. Us emergency room nurses can treat you and stabilize you. Fifteen minutes across town, if you have a bleeding stroke, or if you have a blockage and that's creating your stroke, we have medications that can improve your outcomes. And then, yes, we'd probably have to transfer you, but that fifteen minutes can mean you could play with your grandkids again, or it means you're laying in a hospital bed the rest of your life. It supports economic growth. Hospitals are economic engines, they make money. And a new hospital will recreate jobs, attract healthcare professionals, and it'll help retain your healthcare professionals here. your healthcare professionals here. We want to have a younger community, that's what a lot of you have run with. We want to have younger generations stay in Minot. This is a great opportunity to help with that issue. Along with that, the for-profit hospitals are going to be paying an oppressive amount of taxes. We're talking about how a lot of the money goes out of town, but we're forgetting to mention that they have to pay taxes on their profits, which will really help support the community. And it'll better serve North Minot. The new facility will serve our northern neighborhoods and Air Force Base, ensuring faster, more accessible care for those who are currently underserved. And last but not least, enhance community resilience. A second hospital ensures that Minot healthcare system can handle crises, whether it's this year severe events like the 2011 flood where our northern side of town didn't have healthcare for, I want to say it was up to a week, without having to go through all the traffic coming to the south side, or healthcare emergencies like COVID-19. We could always use more healthcare professionals in the community for issues like that. I understand there may be a concern about logistics. After doing much research on exceptional healthcare, the business, which will fully be funding and operating the facility with no community funds involved, I found that they have proven track record in building hospitals tailored to the needs of the community. They're not a one-size-fits-all. They come into the community and they find what we need. For example, we need a pain doctor right now. They go out, they find us a pain doctor, and they bring them in. They do this with all of the communities they build in. This hospital is not meant to replace the existing facility, but it's really here to complement Trinity and work alongside Trinity in our community by alleviating the pressure on the current system and focusing on the less acute patients. This is a critical moment for our community. By approving the zoning change, you will be ensuring that Minot has the healthcare infrastructure it needs to meet the demands of today and the future. You'll be strengthening our community, providing better care, and creating new opportunities for healthcare workers who want to serve right here at home in Minot. I urge you to take this step for Minot's future. Thank you for the time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And just so you want to know, I actively work in a smaller hospital in our rural community, and I also work in one of our trauma two centers in Bismarck, so I'm a wealth of knowledge if you have any questions from a nursing aspect.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Continuing on with the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of or
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Brent Matson, and being a part of the business community here at Minot and someone who deeply cares about the well-being of our community, I'm wanting to express my strong opposition to the rezoning of land for the purpose of building a for-profit microhospital. This decision poses significant risks to our community and threatens the sustainability of Trinity Health, our trust for nonprofit healthcare providing. The Consequences for a For-Profit Microhospital. For-profit hospitals are known for prioritizing high-margin, profitable services while neglecting the broader needs of the community. Their business model often involves skining the cream of the crop, focusing on lucrative specialties and procedures while leaving the most complex, costly, and essential services such as trauma care, behavioral health, mental health services to not-for-profit health systems like Trinity Health. Moreover, for-profit hospitals frequently spin off staff away from local healthcare systems by offering short-term incentives that disrupt workforce stability. This is especially concerning in Minot where the healthcare workforce is already strained. The presence of a for-profit competitor will exacerbate staffing shortages, reduce access to care, and compromise the quality of services that Trinity Health provides as our Region Two Trauma Center. The Community Benefit of Trinity Health. Trinity Health is more than just a healthcare provider. It is an integral part of our community's economic and social fabric, unlike for-profit entities which send their profits to shareholders far removed from our region. Trinity Health reinvests every dollar back into the organization and the community it serves. This includes: Critical Services. Trinity Health provides essential, yet often unprofitable services such as trauma care, medical health, and chronic disease management. Services for profit organizations, they would not prioritize. Community Investment. Not even two years ago, Trinity Health completed a $500 million commitment to this region, a huge capital investment for the community for the construction of the state-of-the-art medical campus, Phase One of the multiple phases this master plan has in the future of the medical district and healthcare campus for the region of Northwest North Dakota. Additionally, it contributes more than $1 million annually to local organizations, schools, and programs that directly benefit Minot and surrounding region. Local Decision-Making is Huge. Unlike for-profit entities whose priorities are determined by distant shareholders, all decisions at Trinity Health are made locally by leaders who understand and care about the unique needs of our community and region. A Call to Protect Trinity Health. The presence of a for-profit microhospital will undermine the mission and sustainability of Trinity Health, an organization that has been unwavering in its commitment to the community. Allowing this rezoning would signal to current and future investors that Minot does not prioritize or protect the institutions that have supported its growth and well-being for generations. Trinity Health is not only vested in the Minot community, but is deeply invested in its future. Its efforts to provide comprehensive, equitable care, and its commitment to reinvesting in the community to ensure and assure that our region will continue to thrive. In Closing. I urge the City Council to carefully consider the long-term implications this decision will have and to stand with Trinity Health, which has stood by this community for decades. Please vote against the rezoning of land for a for-profit microhospital and preserve the integrity and future of our local healthcare system. Thank you.
Questions? Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Brent. Continuing on with the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposals.
I'm Dr. Scott Knutson, Mayor, Members of the Council. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm Chief of Staff at Trinity Health. I've heard several comments tonight that I would just like to address specifically. One, to echo Mr. Matson's comments of the longstanding support. For 102 years, this hospital has helped support this community through its healthcare needs. At times, there were two hospitals in town, at one time, three, as you know, but in the last 30 years, there were two, and one was outsourced to a for-profit institution, gutted, and then acquired by Trinity to further expand our services. Those services are a not-for-profit institution. Everything that is made goes back into providing further services in our community. That's the way a not-for-profit works. The margin is small. Unlike other businesses, we answer to regulatory systems, we answer to states, we answer to payers with their own requirements, and we don't get to raise our prices and adjust as at the drop of a hat to make our ends meet. Post-COVID, we have had staffing shortages, which is similar to many other businesses in the region, and we have strived and worked together to provide services. You've heard some anecdotal stories of wait times. As an ER physician of over 20 years at Trinity, I would be the first to tell you, we have excessive wait times and we are not currently meeting what I would expect to give as an ER provider to our community. Bringing another institution into this town to meet that need actually does not answer the problem. We have pay and we have throughput and process initiatives in place that will play out over the next 12 months that I think will greatly improve our ER services and meeting the timely needs of our ER patients. But one thing to remember about an ER is that you're always prioritizing the worst that are sick. And in our case, frequently, that takes many of our regional trauma patients, that takes our heart patients, that takes patients that require additional services that cannot be provided at a standalone facility. Transferring those people to our facility for further care adds extra workload to our EMS services, of which they already run over 800 calls a month. They are excessively burdened with transfers as it is, and adding another transfer facility, which every third patient that gets transferred, doesn't help that flow. They take the same staff that are already in our community. We don't bring new staff in for these organizations. We bring the same staff that are currently working in our institution and pulls those resources even further to backfill our needs and the needs of this region. And lastly, a comment was made about alternative medicine cares. We, as an organization, and particularly my role, is responsible for the quality of care provided at Trinity Health. Every quality issue that directly offensices care comes through the committees that percolate up and get reviewed, get assessed, get looked at for standard of care. We have an obligation to practice evidence-based medicine, to practice that to the best of our ability. Any organization that comes to town will likewise have that same obligation. So if alternative medicine needs are needed in the community, we have other clinics for those, but at the Hospital for Urgent Care, for acute care, we have to practice to standards which are known throughout the country. Lastly, I want to speak on behalf of our employees. They are working excessively hard. There's, you hear in the comments some animosity, but I want to remind you that Trinity Health is 3,000 Minot people and the region is our employees. We are not an entity unto ourselves, we are an entity made up of many of the civilians of this community. Everybody, despite our strains, are striving to provide the best care possible, and I think approving this recommendation of a zoning request will actually make our concerns worse in providing healthcare to our region, not better. And I'd urge your consideration of Mr. Kutch's request to delay and further review this process.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Continuing on with the public hearing for those who wish to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, City Council. My name is Ben Anderson, resident of Minot, as well as the current Chief Nursing Officer for Trinity Health. I'd like to speak a few things. Number one, I've been a nurse for over 20 years. At least 80% of that time has been spent either trying to staff a unit safely, or staff a department safely, or a hospital. I've worked on both coasts, I've worked for large health systems. Trinity Health is the smallest group I've worked for, but I moved here and chose this space very intentionally. I am not from North Dakota. My wife, however, and her entire family is from Max. We relocated here early last year and are very proud to be a part of this community. Trinity Health is part of this community. We are intertwined. As Dr. Knutson said, oftentimes, we are criticized for what we can or cannot do or did wrong, forgetting that these are people and caregivers amongst this community. A very big thing I've learned as a nurse of over 20 years is that I cannot hatch a nurse. There's a healthcare crisis across the country, it is worse here. Trinity has done everything and will continue to do more, but has done everything that any health system I've ever worked for to relieve those staffing strategies. We have our own clinical nursing assistant program, we have our own scrub tech program, we have our own school of radiology, we partner closely with D C B and Minot State, providing all of their clinical support for practicum, as well as financially support them. We are doing everything we can to safely staff our hospital, but it is our biggest challenge. My biggest challenge as the Chief Nursing Officer is to safely provide nursing care and nursing support to this community. I am not opposed to competition, but I am opposed to competing for scarce labor resources. And I believe a for-profit microhospital will actually worsen that problem that we have in the community. So I am asking for support and to not give us another challenge. We had COVID, we got through it. We had a large building and a move. We had a flood. We had a flood in which Trinity actually stood up an emergency nursing facility, excuse me, an emergency facility on the north end of town within hours, with a helipad and staff and x-ray. That's what Trinity means to this community. And we have plenty of challenges, and we will continue to work through them as an organization and as a senior leadership team, but we ask for not one more challenge to give us, which is competing for staff and competing for some of these patients. Thank you.
Continuing on with the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of or against.
I didn't come prepared with anything, but I've had a few thoughts floating around. My name is Edana Kitzman, I've lived here, oh, since 85. I lived closer to Bismarck most of my life before that. In that town, there was Bismarck Hospital and Trinity, or St. Alexis, they still exist. St. Alexis is now CHI, I think that is still private or not-profit. Sanford Health was Med Center One, and before that was Bismarck Hospital. They've been around forever. Across the way was Mandan, and they used to have a hospital. They had outgrown the hospital building in Mandan, so they closed it and put a rehab center or something. Those two hospitals in Bismarck have been around before I was born. I was born in one of them, that's a long time ago, and they did a good job, and the other one served me and most of my family many times also. I don't see any problem in that community during those years of 50 years or so. The competition was not a problem. Many of my classmates came to Minot State and became nurses there from college. They went someplace else, but we've got that college in Dakota whatever from Botno. They're doing the community a service and training. Why are we saying we can't get help when we're training them right here and they don't want to stay? If there is a shortage and job vacancies, those that are graduating right here in this town don't stay, probably don't even apply. But another community like Bismarck can serve with two hospitals, all of Bismarck and surrounding communities, which has almost tripled in size in 40 years, and Mandan also. They have no problem with paying the wages of the income they get from patients and insurance companies that do the paying. I don't understand how that competition, whether it's for-profit or not-profit, has a problem in hiring people, in keeping people, and in serving the customer. It has no bearing, unless there is a situation that the service rendered is so particular they cannot provide for every patient. And I see where the ER has a problem with a wait line, or like he said, we don't have, I know customers or residents are sent time after time to Mayo, or Bismarck, or Fargo, because Minot doesn't have that here. If you have competition or services to provide, one can have one specialty that the other doesn't and go back and forth. They can work together. I know St. Az did, I know Bismarck Hospital did, I also know Mandan did too. They combined their effort to serve the residents. They didn't focus on the tunnel vision of, "Our name's been here longer, we get to own it." I don't trust that. I don't trust that principle in any business or in any community. Sorry.
Any questions? Thank you. Continuing on with the public hearing for those who wish to speak in for or against the proposals. Seeing no one moving towards the dais, what are the wishes of the council? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we close the public hearing and accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
We have a motion by Mike, a second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to take off my City Council hat for just a moment and think as a patient and think as a parent and a wife and a grandparent, how important medical services are in Minot and how important it is to have a hospital that can meet all of those needs. So, in that thought process, I certainly want Trinity Hospital to... So in that thought process, I certainly want Trinity Hospital to maintain and to succeed and to be here for the near future, for the long-lasting future. So I have concerns with the microhospital coming to town. However, what we are charged with tonight to vote on is a zoning request, and I don't see any way that we can deny that. So while I believe that there would be a potential issue with a microhospital coming to town, I believe I have to vote for this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other debate? Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to echo Alderwoman Olson's comments. Nowhere on our memo does it state anything about a microhospital. We're discussing a zoning change. We were given a courtesy to even know what the intentions were with this land. And again, this is, this is what we're charged with. We're charged with passing judgment on, on a zoning change. And, and that's, that's, that's as far as this goes. What someone decides to do with their land is not within the purview of the city as long as they meet all the requirements. And when it comes to pulling a building permit, they'll have to cross that bridge as well. But again, I'll, I'll be in line with supporting this item from the Planning Commission.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.3, Public Hearing Case Number 2024-11-05, Our Lady of Grace Edition Zoning Map Amendment and Preliminary Platte. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the zoning map amendment to step forward.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and City Council Meeting, our members. I did some research on this, changing the zoning of that church into a public zone. And I read it, I found it in Section 16.3. The public zone district is designed to retain and provide lands areas owned by the local government for public use. And then in Section 16-4, uses permitted: civic centers, public libraries, fire stations, auditoriums, armories, other government offices, sewage lift, water pump house, sewage and water treatment plants, courthouse, jails, municipal landfills, municipal parking lots, commercial recreation group occupying publicly-owned lands, community centers, golf courses, multiple water storage, museum, park, playground, or athletic field, swimming pool, ice arena, zoo, airport, cemetery, private universities, elementary to high school, substations, modular classrooms on school property with a principal building. It is not listed as a place for a church to be put on. And my understanding for the reason of this, they're also adding another lot on here, and that's for a food bank. It's a 3,000 to 4,000 square foot building separate from the church located in the southwest corner of the lot. This is what they want to build, a food bank, not a food pantry. This would be where the food pantries get their supplies from. This is a commercial building, and that's not allowed in the R1 area. So this is just a, I don't think they're being clear. They're not being upfront with the people in the neighborhood as to what their game plan is, as to why they want to make it public properly, which it doesn't qualify to be changed to a public zone. It isn't. It's in your code of ordinances. Somebody didn't do their homework, and they're just trying to put it in here so that they can get a commercial building permit for this 4,000 square foot building right there in our residential area. And I think it would be wise to inform the whole Edison School District as to what kind of a change this is going to be. Because this is going to be, if you allow it, which you certainly shouldn't, it will increase the semi-traffic in our area. And then after you load up this, this building with all of these goods, they have to yet again take truckloads out to serve the other smaller pantries. So I'm all full, I'm all for a food bank in our community, but this isn't how it should go. It needs to be put in a place for a commercial building, not in a residential area. And so I do not think that you should approve this to be put into a, a public zone, because city attorney, I don't think that you would be in favor of doing such a thing where it's not even a possibility to be put in a public zone. So that's all I have to say about this. I live at 616 17th Avenue Southwest. The view of this warehouse would be right out my picture window. And my parents bought this property when I was three years old, so I've been embedded in this neighborhood for a long time. I've spoken to the neighbors on either side of me. They are not for it, but they didn't understand when they just got this little, this little piece of paper from the city saying, "Hey, we want to change the zoning." What's that mean to anybody? I worked in the, in the engineering department at Northern State's Power for 35 years, and I worked with, with property and zoning, the different building permits, the easements. Estevold, the surveyor, they said they needed to have this changed to be able to, to put this building on top of an easement that was placed there for drainage and utility easement. And that easement was put in there to serve the residential lots that are on 16th Avenue, or 17th Avenue. They go from the last house that's there, that's Mrs. Goldaddy's house, and the next, there's a lot, seven, six, five, four, and three, that take you from the, the last residential house on 17th Avenue to Seventh Street. There also in the lot area that's number three, there's a slough in there. That's where I caught my tadpoles and the boys made their rafts every spring. And it still has water drainage. We have a very high water table up there. I had to have three 60-year-old trees removed recently from the front yard because of the Dutch elm disease. The tree trimmer was amazed when he took the top off, the tree that was the farthest north on my property, that the water shot out of the top of it like a cannon. And so I need to plant more trees there, and it wouldn't hurt if the church would plant some trees over there to drink up some of that water too. But I don't believe that this would be a possibility to change this zoning to P for public, mainly because it's designated to retain and provide the land areas owned by the local government for public use. This property is owned by the church, and I think they're overstepping what they're doing, and they're not being clear to the neighborhood. So I am totally against this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing on with the public hearing, for those who wish to speak in favor or in for or against the proposal. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented by Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Rob, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? Does that include and close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, yes, and enclose the, the public hearing.
Is the second okay with that? Mark, are you okay with?
Yeah, we should close the public hearing.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mark?
Is there, okay, so in light of the lady's comments, is there somebody from the staff or that can sort of clarify these issues that were brought up, just so we're all clear on what is, what the story is?
I guess I could answer any questions that you have. I guess the first one I would address is that religious.
Doug, can you pull the mic a little bit closer to you?
Sorry. The first one that I would address is that religious and public assembly falls under public and private institutional uses within our use table and is a permitted use in the public zone. Also, this property holds a public and institutional future land use designation in our comprehensive plan. So the rezone request is supported by the comprehensive plan. Other than that, the only thing I would lead you toward is there's, there is a federal law in place. It's called Ralupa. It's the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. Essentially, it says that we as a municipality must use our least restrictive method to limit land uses on properties owned and operated by religious institutions. So this is why you see daycares and food banks and all of these other different activities happening at churches and cities not trying to restrict those land uses on those religious lands. They have a great deal of freedom in how they conduct their ministry on their property. I don't know if that clarifies it, if you have any specific questions other than that.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just continue that, Doug. You know, while, while the, while the lady was speaking, I was clicking around and looking at a bunch of the different lots around town that have churches on them. Is it, so we've got them on R1, we've got them on C2, we've got them on lots of different zones. Is, would we be moving things towards making those public over time? Or would it only be upon request? Would that be part of a cleanup process?
Mayor Ross, councilman, bless him. So religious and going along with that Ralupa, it is permitted in all districts except for heavy industrial and industrial Park One and industrial Park Two. Those are our only land, zoning land classifications that restrict religious institutions. So it would be based upon the applicant's request. They are looking to accomplish something on their property and have asked that it be rezoned to public. That request was supported by our future land use map. That's why staff made the recommendation that they did.
Any other questions? Thank you, Doug. Continuing on, any further comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no further comments, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.4, Public Hearing Case Number 2024-11-06, Ramstead's First Edition Zoning Map Amendment. Now is the opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the zoning map amendment to step forward. Second call for someone, for anyone who wishes to speak on this matter. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mark?
I move to close the public hearing and approve the item as recommended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Scott? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item, action item six, Public Hearing 6.1, C D B G, Substantial Amendment Number 10, Submission to HUD. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against. Second call for those who wish to speak on the issue on the floor. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and proceed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give Lisa the second on that one. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item seven on the agenda, that's our consent items. We have 15 items on the agenda, and we have none that have been requested to be pulled. So what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move the remaining items.
We have a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to action items. 8.1, as we know, was, was pulled from the agenda, so moving on to 8.2, Elimination of the City Franchise Fee. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob? Discussion? Any discussion?
Can I? Sorry, I just want to clarify with Alderwoman Olson. You're moving approval to eliminate.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That was my question as well, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mike?
So with that, you know, as I, as I read through the memo, I guess the one thing that came to mind, if we did have this come up, if there was something that needed to be addressed with a franchise fee, my assumption is that we could, we could do an ad hoc committee to do that as needed. Is that, is that your thought or understanding?
Well, I, I guess, you know, at the time when it was created, we had a 14-member, 14-member council, and I think a franchise committee, in my opinion, is just my opinion, that the franchise committee would be a committee of the whole.
Okay.
I, I mean, what, if and when that comes to it.
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be the historian for a minute. So you are correct, the, the committee was created when we had a 14-member council. There were five members on the committee, so at that time, it was not the entire committee. I think more currently, it, it remained at five, which didn't make sense because only two of our council members were not part of it. So I think if there were something, it should be made as part of an agenda, and we could all vote on it.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 8.3, Mid-Continent's Franchise Fee Amendment, Elimination of In-Kind Services. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommendation.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Mike?
So, so on this, and maybe for the city manager, I remember the discussion on this in a meeting somewhere. Did we, did we get any feedback then? I, I see the letters that went out. Did we get any feedback from any of the community partners that were sort of working underneath our authority?
Mr. Mayor, I'll run, bless them. The only entity that I'm aware of is M A C E D C who had no issues. They were checking that they didn't believe they had any services at the time, and if they did, they were going to turn in their equipment, and it wasn't an issue for M A C E D C.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Moving on to item 8.4 on the agenda, the Airport Operations Part 139 Platform Agreement. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommendation.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob? Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 8.5, this is a new item that we've added onto our agenda during the legislative session, discussion of legislative topics. And I think it's, just a little background on that, there are going to be some topics that are going to be discussed down in Bismarck, and I think it's worthwhile for us to be proactive on the front end of it to kind of stand up in support of what's happening in Bismarck or stand up against what, what could be potentially happening in Bismarck that could affect the city of Minot. And at this time, really, we're kind of new. The session's kind of new, so there's a lot of, a lot of things thrown out, so I guess I'll just, I'll just open it up for discussions. I don't know, Harold, if you've got anything. I know we've got some testimony happening tomorrow with the Suris River Flood Control Program in front of the appropriations. So I think Jason and, uh, Ryan Ackerman will be, uh, attending, uh, and providing testimony for that as well. But Paul?
Just, just maybe for Harold, do we have, um, or, or city staff? Do we have any, um, anything lined up with Shane Gettle to come present to council? Might be a little, little early on in the session, but any, any, any placeholders on an agenda for that discussion item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pitner, that would be at the discretion of the council. He is a little busy in Bismarck following everything. We, we will plan as we normally do to bring him back during the recess and during the, the changeover and, um, he can provide updates at that point. Um, the mayor and I and Alderman Blossom have a weekly meeting as well as other key staff, um, every Friday morning to go over, uh, what's happened in the previous week, what we anticipate, the schedule to be. For the next week, I, I provide the council that, that, uh, report, uh, from Mr. Gettle, uh, every Friday afternoon as well. So the email I sent last Friday would be the most up to date of progress on bills and where those things are at. There's a lot of things being discussed right now in the legislature that all have, uh, impacts and consequences. And, uh, and, uh, and so staff doesn't want to get out in front of council and represent the city in a, in a manner that the, the majority of the council, uh, feels differently then, and that's why this is on the agenda this evening. So if there are any of those items, and there are some topics that, uh, we as staff are probably not going to address significantly or have a major position on, and particularly with a lot of the, uh, discussions on property tax reform and some of those kinds of things. Those are political decisions. And so I think it would be appropriate for this body as elected officials, um, to give that direction. And then staff would be happy to participate in any way appropriate, uh, at the discretion and the direction of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So if I could, I, I think, uh, I think the work that we're doing, um, is, is very important. And, and the first example I'll give of that right now, I was in Bismarck, um, three days last week on different bills, but the most significant of which was the governor's property tax reform plan. Um, and, you know, if you look at the, if you look at the sponsors of that bill, um, you've got both majority leaders, you've got both appropriations chairs, you've got both tax and finance chairs. So there's a lot of momentum coming with that. And that has major implications for every council, for every local subdivision across the entire state. Mainly because one of the main proposals that's on the, on the table right now is that they limit local levy growth to three percent in that proposal. Um, you know, it, as, as was mentioned by Harold, I think when I was there testifying and I was the only person testifying in opposition on that bill. When I was there, I stood in front of them and said, I serve on the Minot City Council, but I do not represent the Minot City Council. I, we don't have a vote that's giving us that direction. If we choose to, we could take a position on something like that. Um, and that, you know, that weight then of the council coming into that discussion can be helpful. And so I can tell you, I think there's a lot of, uh, a lot of momentum behind that idea. I talked to a couple of members of, of, this was in the House Finance and Tax Committee. I talked to a couple of members, I talked to the chairman, um, the next day after that testimony. And I think this is, this is likely the key to any legislations that's going to come through. Now, the League of Cities and the Association of Counties both went, they gave what they called, affirmative, uh, testimony on the bill. But they both said that we need to take a look at the numbers, we need to take a look at whether that should be CPI plus a certain percentage, something along those lines, because they, among anyone understands exactly what this is going to mean for all their member organizations. So if you think about it, we did some heavy lifting last fall. We did a great thing for the people of the city with our budget and getting money back to the people. In my opinion, we should not be automatically punished for that, for doing the right thing by having our levability affected the next year. So to me, I, I think everybody here, hopefully everybody watching knows where I will be on our spending and where our budgets go. But having the heavy hand or the heavy thumb of the government, of the state government on a, on the scale, working against us, I don't believe is the right path. And so I think, you know, again, whether we bring a motion here today to support that or to, to make a clearer message, um, you know, I'll leave that up to my colleagues here on the council, but I will be there saying that at least on my own behalf because I believe it's the wrong direction.
Do you think, just a question, uh, Alderman Blossom, you know, with, with that bill plus the other property tax bills down in Bismarck right now, fifty-five plus bills? Is it, are we too early in the game to take a stance on something like that? Until some of that stuff kind of fishes itself out and, and we have maybe one consolidated or two or three that, that really are probably stronger that we can maybe at that time? And I'm, I'm asking that for a question. You spend a lot more time down in Bismarck than?
So I, potentially, um, but the thing that I would say, I do think that it's important that especially the members of the finance and tax committees, because that's where these bills are right now. The way that it was described to me that this is likely to happen is that they're going to hear all the bills and they're going to hold those bills. They're not going to act on them in, in terms of a committee to send them back to the floor. And the thought process is that they may put together a subcommittee. And that subcommittee will go and try to take the best of those ideas to come up with sort of the bill, um, at least to come out of the committee. So with that in mind, yes, that, at that point, that certainly is the time to take that stance if we, if we, if we feel that it's necessary. But I don't want that to diminish the idea that the discussions are going now. And so with each bill that comes in front of them, so, you know, Tuesday was the governor's bill. Wednesday was Representative Louser from District Five in Minot. His bill that includes school funding as a method of getting at property tax reform. His bill also includes caps. The main bill that's looking at moving to square footage instead of valuation includes caps. So that, that concept is resonating, I think, with a lot of legislators right now. And so whether we take action with a motion for that kind of support, I do think it's important for us to use the context that we each have down there to help them understand that thought process. And also to maybe encourage the League of Cities as well, that at least from our perspective, that is what we're, what we're looking at.
Good. Thank you. Scott?
So I, I agree with Mike and Mike, I listened to your testimony and I wish I could have been there. I was actually in Bismarck yesterday. Uh, my wife was testifying on a bill. And I believe it's very important that we actually be there to testify. We can put in testimony in writing. But from what I've seen and what I, people I talk to and what I've heard, they don't all read it. And I think actually being there, and I've been a big proponent of property tax reform and relief. And when I look at what happened with measure four, it was all about local control. And when you're going to put a three percent cap on all the subdivisions, like Mike said, it's very unfair for the ones that are really watching what they're doing. And there's, there's nothing in that that reads local control. So I would agree with Mike. I think that we have to say no to any bill that contains that. And I, um, what Paul had said about, uh, Mr. Gettle, I do believe that we need every once in a while, an in-person update from him. I, I read the stuff that we get from them, but I was not able to make our, uh, special meeting for the legislature, you know, the led, local legislators that were here. But I did watch it. I was very disappointed that Mr. Gettle was here and did not speak. I was just, I, I was very taken back by the fact that he didn't have anything to say, so that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add something further, I think one of the other things that I think we're seeing through the beginning of this session, the work, the little bit of work that we did do late in December to have a conversation with legislators mattered immediately. Okay, because some of the stuff, whether it's, it's the bill that Harold had advocated for or the other work that we're doing down there, those conversations flowed right out of the back end of that discussion. And so as we look ahead to future sessions, I think we want to make that a, a repeatable thing. And I, you know, I think, um, you know, whether we have, whether we have Shane come on and, and speak with us directly, um, you know, we do have the meetings going on on Friday and certainly, um, you know, there's nothing magic to me. I, because of the work I do around the state, I spend time in Bismarck. Um, but certainly I, I think if others would like to be there for those discussions, it's sort of a rapid fire of Shane going through the bills that he believes may impact the city. And so we're able to take a look at that and decide if there's something. I think that's going to be a key to any discussions we have over the coming meetings to say, is this something we want to take a stance on because it may matter? You know, they, really, you know, we, we do have a lot of, a lot of, I guess clout is one way to put it because we're, we're a major city in the state. And so if we have sitting council members or our mayor or our city manager there to give that, to give that testimony, legislature, the legislators will listen to that. I mean, it's important to them that our, the local subdivisions and our cities, um, are in a workable situation. And so, um, I think it is important that we do that as often as we can. And to Scott's point, there's no, there's no question doing it in person is, is the best way to do that. Because there, you know, you're looking at a eye to eye and, and it's, you know, in my case, it's a, it's hopefully a bunch of legislators that I know in most cases.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I, the reason I request maybe get Shane to come again is for that back and forth, right? I mean, it's to, to, to create that dialogue, it's great, the reports are great and, and, and it's, it's invaluable information. But to have that dialogue that sometimes you have questions come up on the spot. And, and I know that the, the Chamber EDC is going to be running some, uh, some forums on the weekends to stay up to date on some of those and have legislators, um, available. And, and just to echo, you know, the in-person stuff, I've been, I've been one of the individuals that have been asked the night before to go down and testify. And you get up early, drive down to Bismarck, you testify. And a lot of those conversations, like Mike said, they, they, they extend beyond testimony and there's follow-up and there's, hey, you made some good points, can you get me more information on that? And then we come back with city staff and we, we follow through on those things. So again, it's, there's no, no, no question about it. If, 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 if any of us are residents from the city or city staff are able to go and testify and get in front of your legislators, it's, it's a, it's an absolute, uh, um, no-brainer, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Harold?
Just with the comments about wanting to hear more from Mr. Gettle. And I guess that's at the discretion of the council. I mean, we have that standing meeting at every Friday at eleven thirty. But to have the court of the council, it just has to be a published notified meeting. And if that's the will of the council, I'm sure Mr. Gettle would agree to that. He would probably only be participating via video call. He won't be able to be here in person. But I'm sure he'd be able to participate virtually if that's the will of the council to do that on a regular basis. We have that meeting weekly.
Thank you, Harold. Any further discussion? Scott?
So Mike, I, my question is, are you looking for something that I, I, I just, I don't believe that there's any local authority that should be in favor of a three percent cap. And I, I believe Minot should, um, should be against that.
Mr. Mayor? Paul?
Would, 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 would that be a resolution that Minot would, would they take a formal stance on? Would that be something that comes from the League of Cities where they look for communities to sign on and endorse? Is that direction we can give to, to those entities? Is it something that we should direct staff? I don't know if I feel comfortable making a direct motion on something or if we direct staff to bring something back at our next meeting?
You know, I do, we, we did have a League of Cities meeting with, uh, mayors and, and administrators from across the state. Um, and, and just some of the discussion that happened there was, it, it, it seems like, um, the stance on a cap, and Mike, you can probably back me up on, the stance on a cap is, is pretty strong. There's the, it, it, the feeling I got from that meeting was there's going to be a cap. And, and there's really nothing we can do about it. So the con, the, the conversation turned to, how can we adjust that cap? How can we influence that cap? When you say CPI compute, Consumer Price Index plus two percent was something like that. And I think over the last, there was a stat, a statement there over the last fifty years, Consumer Price Index was, uh, averaged about three point three, uh, over the last fifty years. So, so if there's a cap, three point three plus two percent, that, that was something being discussed. But once again, I'm just, um, you know, I, I, I'm all in favor, I just think if it boils down, you know, I, it probably, for me, it may be too early to, to, to send that message to Bismarck. I, that's just, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there, there's a lot, I mean, it's racing down in Bismarck right now. Not that I, I don't want to cap, you know, but, you know.
So, so if I could just, just follow up on that, I guess back to, back to Scott's question. I think if we chose to, what we would, all that we would be authorizing, all I think it would take is a simple motion that allows whether it's me or you, Tom, or, or whoever might be testifying on specifically to the cap, to say Minot's position as a council is that we would do, we will not support the cap. If we chose to take that motion, I think we could do that. Um, and then if it's me, if I'm standing there, I'm able to say our council unanimously, or whatever the vote would be, um, wants to let you know that we do not support the caps for these reasons. And, and again, I, I'm comfortable going down and do that. I, you know, again, I, I know the chair there, I know some of the members of the committee. That's all, that's all fine and good. If we chose to go that path, we could do that now. We could do that at the February meeting, so, the first February meeting. So I don't know that there's magic in the timing other than the additional bills that are going to be heard between now and then. So that's where we're at today.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I just had a quick question for you. So during your League of Cities meeting, you said that most people from the League of Cities, the, the major cities in North Dakota were opposed to the cap, but they're just resigning to the fact that we're going to have a cap. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, in, in a matter of words, I mean, it, it just seemed like the message from the legislature was, look, there's going to be caps. There's going to be a cap. But so they kind of, yeah.
Okay. I just, I guess my question and maybe Mike, i- if all the major cities in North Dakota stand up and say, hey, we're opposed to this cap as a council from Fargo, as a council from Bismarck, as a council from Minot, I can't imagine that the state legislature would go against all of the major cities saying, hey, we're going to cap you guys anyway, no matter what you think.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I could. So, um, what, what I would say, Rob, is I think, I think the feedback that we would get then is, no, the people ask for property tax reform. We're going to dump tons and tons and tons of money back into all your communities. You're going to live with a cap. And, and I don't blame them for that. I mean, in, in fact, you know, I, I would encourage everybody, if you do want to, go back and look at my testimony on this because I didn't focus on that. What I told them was you need to get out of the buy-down regime. If, if you remember, when we sat up here with the legislators, that, there was a two-part thing that I mentioned to them that I really didn't want to see. The first was expanding the buy-down regime and the second was capping local spending. They did exactly those two things in these plans. And the reason for that is, is that they're feeling pressure from the public. You know, the public decided not to go forward with measure four, but they do want property tax reform. So they believe the best way to do that is increasing the buy-down regime. So Governor Armstrong's proposal is over ten years to completely remove primary residence property tax. It'll be gone if his plan flows through to fruition. But local levies will be capped as a part of that. Because what they didn't want is they didn't want the buy-downs to result in local entities just raising the, the lid again, which is what's happened so far with the buy-downs. So I, I think that would be their answer, Alderman Fuller, is that they would say, no, we're sending the money, you're going to live with a cap. And again, I don't, I don't blame them for that, but I also don't believe that that means that that needs to be the end of the discussion. Because I, you know, I threw out all kinds of thoughts for them to take a look at, including, you know, looking at, at the sales tax and taking a penny off the state's sales tax and reducing it, leaving those dollars locally. And then local subdivisions could look at it and say, hmm, maybe now a half cent does make sense for public safety. But we still leave a half cent with the people. There are other options to take a look at how to get at this. And my, what I was trying to do during that discussion was to help them understand that there are other ways to look at it, but that the local subdivisions would likely have a lot of heartburn with the caps.
Any further discussion? Scott?
So I, I would say that what, what everybody is proposing right now or what I've seen with, like, um, Mike had said with just, you know, extending what's been done, the cap's the only way it works. So to me, there's got to be another idea. They've got to come up with something else. And there, there are other ways to do it. I just, I don't know in reality if we have legislators that are, are willing to do it. And, and leave us with, because again, I've always believed that we should have local control. And truly, we never have. Because when it comes to property tax, the state dictates how we do it. How we collect it, when we collect it. How we have to appraise the houses, all of that. They've always done that. And now all they're doing in trying to come up with a way to appease all the ones that are complaining. are complaining is they're coming up with another plan to take more control away.
Any, any other comments? Discussion? Lisa.
Mr. Mayor, I would just agree with you that I think it, it probably will be better for us to wait two weeks, four weeks, to get a little bit better idea of what bill is going to kind of float to the top. And I'm very appreciative that Aldrin Blessam is, is taking time to go down there and testify, and I encourage everyone to do that. But right now, I think there is just too much information for anyone up at this dais to go down and say, this is what we want and this is what we don't want. So let the legislators kind of work out a few more of these things and we will have better information that I think we could vote on with a resolution and send that message back.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing further, we will move on to item nine on the agenda. That's personal appearances. And that is the, uh, opportunity for those who wish to address the council to step forward. I would just ask out of respect for others who wish to speak, uh, keep your comments to, uh, five minutes.
Travis Zablottney here again, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen, Councilwomen. As a taxpayer, I guess I want to weigh in a little bit on this conversation. And number one, remember the idea that what Measure Four was after ultimately was to reform and reduce. Keep that in mind when you think about tax policy. How do we do that? Um, Mr. Mayor, I think you had a little bit of a bewildered look on your face when three of the proponents of Measure Four sitting up here at the dais are advocating against caps. And I would expect that something that, that solid that you would be opposed to in this venue as city councilman, you shouldn't wait to oppose it. If it, if it isn't right right now, it won't be right later. And so I would encourage you to step up.
Well, you heard that I did say that, that I was against caps.
No, I did.
That might have slipped your mind, but go ahead.
No, 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 I, I, you did say that. And I'm saying that, you know, you as a mayor didn't waste any time in joining KeelND because of your concern about local control. And so the frustration I have is now we have the League of Cities, the League, the, the Association of Counties and others, when they're having to oppose legislators, stand back. But yet when they were opposing the public, they were willing to jump right on. And the whole idea here is real reform. It's not to appease, and that's right now the only thing that these two bills, or this bill will do that the government or governor has proposed. I just read an article in the REC magazine where the governor was asked about prior buy-downs, and he said they don't work. But apparently they'll work now when we put a cap on. Well, that doesn't work either. You all know that. That's not why you guys are elected here. Mike put it well where, you know, what does that do to, to any of the public subdivision or public, uh, subdivisions that are looking to lower their taxes? You're not going to lower them because you don't know if you'll have enough for your next needs. So it'll just lock in an automatic levy of the cap is what I'm fearful of, and, and it's not reform. So I would encourage you to take a position upfront at the legislature with the League of Cities and say, look, this doesn't work for us. There have to be better ways. And yes, there are 55 bills. There are lots of ideas out there. Let's make sure our legislators know that they need to be considering them all because we don't agree with caps and there's got to be a better way. That's what I would encourage you to do on that regard. Thank you.
Continuing on with personal parent, personal appearances for those who wish to step forward to address the council. Seeing none, we will move on to item number 10, and that is miscellaneous and discussion items, 10.1, the MAC EDC 2024 City of Minot Contract Report Presentation. Breka, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, and members of City Council. I'm Breka Kramer. I'm the President and CEO of the Minot Area Chamber EDC. I'm joined here this evening by, with Mark Lyman, our Economic Development Specialist, and Kelly Roselli Sullivan, our Workforce Development Specialist and Military Liaison. We also have a number of our board members present this evening. And is the clicker working? Thank you. Um, it is the mission of the Minot Area Chamber EDC to be the advocate for and, and invest in business activity by being a collaborative partner for, in the community focused on improving the quality of life for all. Next slide. It is our vision to be the go-to organization for the business community to drive key initiatives that build and strengthen our economy. So as, a couple of things I just want to give a little bit of background on is our team and how we exist. As an organization, we don't exist without our, those that serve and help support us, the volunteers, hundreds of volunteers that serve on various committees and support the activities of the Chamber EDC. And we're governed and, uh, supported by our Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors, uh, you can see the listing here, really represents a broad swath of the business community. We have developers, successful businesses, entrepreneurs, financial institutions, our utility partners, nonprofit sector, oil and gas industry, healthcare and education represented with our board. And as we look to our team, sorry, the clicker is not working tonight, guys. Can you advance to the next slide, please? Thanks. So as far as with our team, I just wanted to give an overview of who our team's comprised of. We have a small team that works a lot of these key initiatives, not only, um, the ones that the City of Minot supports, but also the other pillars, which I'll cover in a second. And as I've done in the past, we also do oversee the motor vehicle department here that does the tidling work at Arrowhead. That is a contract we have with the Department of Transportation, so I don't want to miss those team members. They're managed by Lacy Coleman, our manager over there. Next slide. With the strategic plan, we really operate and have spent some time focusing on where does the Minot Area Chamber EDC play a role in the community and what are those five key pillars that we're focused in on? When we rolled out our strategic plan, keep in mind, we merged the organization in 2021. We spent 2022 working towards a strategic plan that was actually at the time when I joined the organization. And we've really focused on five key pillars. Economic development, community development, workforce development, member investor services and military support. And I thought it might be helpful for the governing body here to really kind of understand the funding, um, revenue streams that we have into the Chamber EDC. We are, um, working really hard to diversify that. Obviously, the less we can rely on, uh, the public funds, the better, you know, we can do. But we really, the City of Minot is a key partner of ours to support three of these key, key pillars, and that funding is critical to our operations. I do want to kind of cover though this last year, some of the other funding sources under these pillars. Under economic development, we're supported by the City of Minot, War County, the Logistics Park of North Dakota, development contracts that we have there, intermodal operator lease, and privately raised funds, sponsors and programming fees for programs like our entrepreneurial program through Startup Minot. With community development, that pillar really kind of falls under a number of the different, um, pieces that we do depending on what role we play within community development. There's not any direct funding coming in for that pillar specifically. When we talk about workforce development, we have funding from the City of Minot, State of North Dakota, with some of the grants that we've received, and then our pilot program partners. Our member investor pillar is really the former Minot Area Chamber of Commerce. And with that, that is where we bring in member investor dues with almost, um, 650 member investors. We have sponsors for the various activities that we do throughout the year to provide programming. Our motor vehicle income goes into that administrative budget. Our event registration grants, rent income from the Bank of North Dakota all comprises the work that we do for member investors. With military support, we actually kind of have two different lanes as far as with this. With military support on the programming side, that's not city funding going into those efforts. That's where you're going to see our member investor dues, sponsorships, donations, and then proceeds from fundraising events, whether it be supporting, sending airmen home for the holidays, our Prairie Warrior Auctions, some of those larger events that we do. The military support that's funded by the City of Minot and State of North Dakota privately raised funds and our, um, and our symposium sponsors, that goes specifically to Task Force 21. A written report has been submitted, so I'll try to keep the comments brief under each of these pillars, but I do want to spotlight some of the success stories from this past year. And then obviously I'll stand for any questions or our team members that are here this evening. As we get into economic development, we are the lead entity for the City of Minot and the Minot Area in economic development, and we're focused on a number of macroeconomic elements that have been and will continue to be multi-year priorities for growing the local economy and regional economy. And remember, the macroeconomics that we work are really focused on long-term economic growth for the area. With this, we've had success with the Minot Intermodal Facility at the Logistics Park of North Dakota with improving the ability of producers and shippers to access global markets out of our great state. With nearly a thousand acres of combined land, these two economic engines in the east part of Minot are unique to the region and our area, and actually our state. The Intermodal Facility has seen growth and continued opportunities ahead, and we've exceeded our business incentive agreement with the City of Minot each of the years that it's been in place. In 2022, we had two train, or 12 trains containing over 2,800 containers move out of the Intermodal Site. In 2023, we were up to 22 trains moving just under 4,500 containers. And in 2024, as we look back, we had 34 trains moving 7,133 containers out of our Intermodal Site. Since the operation started with provisional approval in October of 2020, here are a few of the key highlights. We've had over four years of success, and I want to give a little bit of history here. This was a very complex project that many invested time, efforts in. The private sector tried it. Private-public partnership tried to pull off this, this, this intermodal service out of our great state, knowing that it was a huge need to support development and growth for the agriculture sector. And at the end of the day, where the Chamber EDC stepped in was in a big way. We actually, um, I don't know of many Chamber EDCs, but we are the owner of the assets and the land. We have rail agreements with our rail partners, with BNSF. We have agreements with the ports of Tacoma and Seattle that we've helped to negotiate, and we've secured a long-term lease with an operator to help us with the operations of the site. Because of that investment, we do continue to spend time because we know that there's additional growth opportunities here. And I'll cover some of that here in a second. We also worked really hard in the beginning because we only had provisional approval to operate the site from BNSF to secure, uh, $2.4 million that we invested into building out track with over 2,000, um, 250, 4,250 feet of track. What that allowed us to do is get off the BNSF main line, and that's really why we're able to move the number of trains that we do today on that site. As we look to the North Dakota commodities moving out of our Intermodal Site, we are shipping now globally to over 20 countries, which is pretty fascinating. Our top commodities include pulses, wheat, soybeans, DDGs, bagged Leonardite, and also sugar beet pulp pellets and other things as well that can, whatever you can fit into a container, we can move to global markets, which is, which is amazing. This is equated to over 10 million truck miles that are saved by moving these commodities through rail. And in October, we had a major milestone, and I know a number of you actually attended when we celebrated our 100th train moving out of the site. It's something we projected would take a lot longer to do, but because of the dedication and staff, the education efforts and work that we continue to put into this site, we've seen substantial growth, and we still have opportunities there. We, um, have moved over 20,000 containers since we started to the ports of Tacoma and Seattle and off to global markets. We now average three to five trains out of our facility each month. If you recall, when we first came in and negotiated a business incentive agreement, our goal within three years was to get to one unit train a month, and we're obviously exceeding that. Um, and we continue to exceed the expectations, not only in the employee count that's out there that we're accountable to the City of Minot for five years, we also are exceeding that with the number of trains moving out of this facility. We also continue to lead efforts in other larger macroeconomic areas. I would say one of them that we've spent not only last year, but a couple of years prior, we're seeing continued activity and discussions, not only locally, but at a state level, is the discussions about natural gas and bringing, um, not only supporting the oil and gas sector, which is one of the major drivers of our economy and our state, but also it's one of our biggest barriers to development in our community. We're seeing the type of development projects we're seeing, whether it be, you hear a lot of discussion these days about data centers or even manufacturing. What we see is access to electricity and natural gas are our barriers here. So we've been really working hard in this space. We have a lot of prospects that we're working through here, and we're also, um, looking through optionality of all the areas within our region that we can, uh, develop and possibly provide natural gas solutions that not only benefit future development, but also help us with production in the state of North Dakota. We have projects that we're not just working for the Minot Area, it, we're not just Minot City proper, but the Minot Area. We're in communities like Berthold and other places, really looking for solutions in this space. I would also say that we've spent some time this past year on carbon capture utilization and storage. Again, another larger effort that is not going to be solved overnight, but we're working through these type of larger things that will impact our economy as a whole. We continue to promote the development of the Logistics Park of North Dakota. We have agreements actually in place that support the City of Minot Flood, Miles River Flood Protection Project, saving the City of Minot dollars with access to some of our materials on that site to help support the flood protection project that we entered. I think a new agreement just this last year. We are also proud of the efforts that we do in the primary sector development area. We're happy to be able to support our anchor tenant, AGT Foods, with additional investments and see growth in this area. AGT Foods has invested over hundreds, a hundred million dollars into our area. They operate all across the globe. They, the Extrusion Center that opened this past year in 2024, I know many of you were able to attend the grand opening. It, this is an example of where we can lean in and be a strategic partner and support that primary sector and continue to build out and support companies like AGT Foods that are investing in our area. They could put this facility anywhere, and we're very fortunate and thankful for their investment here. They are one of the largest suppliers of value-added pulses, staple foods and food ingredients in the world and have approximately $3 billion in sales. They're making an impact in the state that goes beyond sales, though. The Bank of North Dakota showcased AGT Foods and their latest Financial Economic Development Report as a success story that takes advantage of the North, Bank of North Dakota PACE Loan Program, which was supported through a magic fund application through the City of Minot that we helped to move forward, and also the Agriculture Diversification and Development Fund. This year, the Economic Development Association of North Dakota spotlighted AGT Foods as the Economic Development Project of the Year for the state of North Dakota. Those are the kind of businesses that we're working with to continue to grow out the base. And if you guys recall where that facility is located, it was in a empty property that wasn't being utilized in the community. We also focus on growing business through our community, through entrepreneurial programming, hosting over 230 attendees at our monthly networking event. And through the programming that we offer through our Startup Minot Academy, we hosted two cohorts, 10-week courses, and had 15 graduates. Again, growing that business base that supports development and growth in our area. And we're excited to see some of these businesses opening up doors and doing great things in our community. We also are a regional partner on a number of fronts, and I, there's a number of them listed in your packet, so I won't go through them all, but I do want to spotlight a couple of them. For example, the North Dakota Department of Agriculture is obviously a strategic partner of ours, not only with the Logistics Park and the Intermodal Site, but as a whole, due to it being such an economic driver for our state. Ag, energy, some of those sectors are ones that we really lean into to support. The North Dakota Ag Department, um, through a strategic engagement that we helped to facilitate at another Intermodal Site that was a couple of years ahead of us, the vision for this regional livestock planning, uh, grant that they put through this last legislative session came out of that visit. And really what we're trying to do there is look at what are the opportunities to grow out the agriculture sector? That also then could possibly help support additional growth around sites like ours in Minot with the Intermodal Site. And, and the, the need globally for access to proteins continues to grow, and we think we have some development opportunities there that we're leaning in on and have spent some time as far as working and supporting this effort. The other one too I want to call out, the Minot Area Chamber EDC was the only individual chamber or EDC invited to be a part of the governor's statewide housing initiative advisory committee. As we know, we heard it from a number of the healthcare providers, we hear it in a number of sectors. One of our biggest barriers to growth is housing. And so we, the City of Minot is investing in housing studies. city of Minnet is investing in housing studies. I know you've spent a lot of time in this space, but we're leaning in to see what are the things that can be implemented from the programs the state's bringing forward, and how can we bring those to our community to help with the future development. And as we've all talked about with major modernization projects like Sentinel, we know that at some point, we're going to need to take a look at what does that mean for our community and how do we prepare for it. So we are working in this space, too. And then we have participated in things. I'll just call out one. Mark Lyman, our Economic Development Specialist, has been a part of not only the efforts in all of these sectors, but also things like the Rural Electric Cooperatives, where housing and food hub feasibility study. We sit and participate with our community partners. These are the ones that come to our community in Minnet, shop here, and do business here. These are the kind of efforts that we're leaning in on. And I do want to, we're not all about awards. We do this work because it's the right thing to do. But I do want to call out a couple of things with the recognition that the Chamber EDC received this past year. The International Economic Development Council is actually somebody that's been brought in here to our community for a look at our community and how we do economic development. There was an investment in a study a number of years ago. We participate because it is really one of the key economic development councils that brings in international economic developers across the globe. The Minnet Area Chamber EDC Intermodal Project received what's called the Gold Award. It's their highest level of recognition for economic development projects. We received this for the best private-public partnership in populations of 200,000 or less globally. On top of that, out of all 500 nominees for these awards, they have a top 14 Best in Show, which is all populations, all categories that they recognize for economic development excellence. We were one of the 14 recognized for top showing with efforts in economic development this past year. We also received the Governor's Main Street North Dakota Economic Development Diversification Award and for the Minnet Intermodal I don't want to spend too much time reading these, but I do think it's important sometimes to have others' voices at the table. Our Ag Commissioner continues to be a strategic partner, and when we were celebrating the 100th train at the Intermodal Facility, he shared, "The Intermodal Facility provides access to key west coast shipping terminals for our producers and processors. This is instrumental in getting our North Dakota agriculture and manufactured products to international buyers in Central America, South America, and Asia." I'm pleased to celebrate this milestone and look forward to future growth at the facility. We also had feedback from our partners at the ports of Tacoma and Seattle, and they have commissions that oversee both of those ports, and then the Northwest Seaport Alliance is a strategic partner. And again, the Minnet Area Chamber EDC, along with our partners at the Department of Ag and our operator with Rail Motto Group, were recognized for really helping to pilot what they call their inland rail hub strategy. The Northwest Seaport Alliance continues to build out, and the U.S. economy is working to build out how can we do more and export out our products to other markets. And as we look at this, the Northwest Seaport Alliance took on a pilot program with us. They're one of our partners that supported the Intermodal Service. We're an inland port. We don't have any access to ports anywhere near us. So the fact that our strategic partners really spotlight the work we do, I think, is a testament to the number of people that have worked these kind of efforts in economic development. The other pillar of ours that is supported by the city of Minnet was actually a task that the city of Minnet put on us in 2022. During the budget cycle, and it was a meeting I happened to actually miss, the city of Minnet during the budget cycle recognized the workforce shortages and challenges that we see in the community. And during that budget cycle, additional funds were allocated toward the Minnet Area Chamber EDC, and we were asked to take a lead in workforce development. At that time, we have a small team, as you guys see. We looked at it and said yes, and as always, we say yes and figure it out. We took a hard look at how we're going to pull this off, and also with a new position that was maybe possibly one-time funding. We didn't know what that looked like. We actually invested in a workforce development specialist and military liaison, a hybrid position to take on workforce development. And that was, we had that position hired by January of that 2023, right after the contract was signed with the city of Minnet in December. There's no playbook to solving workforce. Workforce challenges have been spotlighted at a state level, at a national level. I wish there was this playbook that said, hey, this is how you do it, but that's not the case. We know even within this legislative session, there's a lot of discussion about how do we tackle workforce. With our unemployment rates, we do not have the workforce within our four walls of our state to support all the different industries here. And if we're going to continue to grow, attract business, and build out that sales tax and that tax base in our community, we are going to need to attract people here. We know the state of North Dakota is investing a lot of dollars into this, so what we're working to do is look at those programs the state's investing in and then seeing where we can pilot and bring local solutions that further down the funnel, so they're not just looking at North Dakota, but they're looking to come specifically to the Minnet area. And I say Minnet area because really we all win as we grow this region. For example, the Wayfinders Program that we organically launched in 2023, we didn't have any marketing dollars. We didn't have any efforts to reach out to different audiences at that time. We were able to recruit some individuals into our state through that, but really when the state opened up the Regional Workforce Impact Program Grants, we saw an opportunity to take the markets that the state of North Dakota is investing millions into and look at how we can then funnel down that effort into getting those key target audience that makes sense for our community. We have a marketing campaign that kicked off in July of '24, and we're focused on four key audiences: recent graduates, boomerangs, veterans, and young families. And we have different markets we're marketing to in each. Our top markets for engagement are Arizona, Colorado, Minnesota, and North Dakota, in that order. From July 1 until December 31, we've seen some activity. We've welcomed a number of Wayfinder inquiries. I think we had just under 20 there. But where we're really excited are the connections that we're making. And we've even heard from utility providers that said, we don't always have somebody after we make a connection that says, "We actually moved here," but we are the proponents that are marketing the community to bring that workforce in. And we know that we've had at least six connections made through that effort in this short period of time, and we've had a lot of other engagements. And as we know, people don't make the decision to up and move their family overnight, so we're going to continue to work this effort while the funding's in place and then work to see how do we continue to do this. We have strategic partnerships. You know, one of the tasks within our city contract, which we are already kind of working on anyway, was to set up a workforce committee, which we've done. We worked tirelessly in this space, and we're really focused on a couple of areas. For example, our efforts have been, a couple of key things that drive workforce into our community is having strong healthcare and strong education system, places to live, and good quality of life. And so where we've been partnering is with some of our partners, Dakota College of Botno, Minnet State University, Trinity Health, working to come up with those programs. We're proud of the support that we were able to provide to the new center downtown, and we'll continue to work those efforts. I know Alderman Olson has been a part of some of those for a long time. Those things, again, don't happen overnight, but we're so excited when we can see the success and another pipeline to keep people in our community. With that, too, we are serving on the city of Minnet Childcare Committee, and since this is a look back at '24, I won't talk about what we're doing moving ahead. And then with the state of North Dakota, we continue to be a part with the Find a Good Life Program. Find the Good Life is one that's investing millions of dollars into this effort and really trying to create a funnel and pipeline. In this past year, through the North Dakota efforts, 71 relocations took place, three of those specific were to Minnet. And the top cities for relocation since this program launched or relaunched in 2022 are Fargo, Minnet, and Bismarck. So we're going to continue to work with those state partners in this space. We are proud to host the first Workforce Summit. Again, we know there are a lot of policies and opportunities to support, whether it be automation, tax credits, whatever that looks like that the state is bringing forward. We felt it was important to have a conversation here and make sure that our community leaders, business leaders, know what is available and what resources are out there. So we brought in Katie Rostenhow with the North Dakota Department of Commerce Workforce Division, Paige Kuntz with the New Office of Legal Immigration, Jessica with the North Dakota Health and Human Services Division, which was focused on childcare, Pat Bertinelli with the Job Service of North Dakota, and a legislative panel with a number of area legislators, not just from our area but from across the state. We did decide to, ahead of this evening, to post all of those resources onto our websites, whether it's our YouTube channel or off the Minnet Area Chamber EDC. Anyone interested in learning more, we're more than happy to liaise on that and share the things that we're sharing with the business community that are leaning in and working these type of programs as a partner with us. We've completed and developed a newcomer and relocation guide with strategic partners. We're the lead on that, but we work very closely with partners to make sure we're getting the right information to the right people. And again, we're the only community to receive two awards at the Governor's Main Street Summit this fall, and we received the 21st Century Workforce Award for the Minnet Wayfinders Program. It's one that's been spotlighted not only within our state but also nationally, a way communities are innovating in workforce. Again, just a couple of comments from those partners that were comments that they've made that I just want to share with you. From the Department of Commerce, Katie Rostenhow, she shares, "Minnet's leading the way in providing innovative solutions to our workforce problems. By tackling new pilot programs like Wayfinders, they are helping to position the north central region of the state as a key strategic partner in solving the modern workforce problem being raised by businesses across the country." We also had Pat Bertinelli, the Director of Job Service in North Dakota, say, "What I love about Minnet is how nimble you are, how quick to come together to celebrate your community, and share what others might not be from here. It's great to see how much you embrace newcomers to the area, to show them how wonderful your community is. We at Job Service North Dakota love the partnership we have with the Minnet Area Chamber EDC." The last pillar that I'll talk about is military, and specifically it's Task Force 21, of which Alderman Mark Janser has served as the Chair of that Task Force 21 for almost 25 years mark, I believe is correct. And then Mayor Ross also serves on Task Force 21. It's a small group with 10 volunteers that give their time for the strategic engagements to help with the military support. And again, let me make sure I'm clear. The city of Minnet funding does not go to the military appreciation events, the auctions we do, all those other things. That's through the programming side. Where the investment on this comes is really to be that advocate and educate and then prepare the community for major modernization projects. We know Minnet isn't Minnet without Minnet Air Force Base, and it's not just about the economic impact. The impact, though, is significant, and I want to be clear. The Minnet Air Force Base economic impact is over $600 million. With that, the state of North Dakota total military economic impact is $1.2 billion. Minnet Air Force Base is over half of the state's military economic impact. Grand Forks is next with over, I think it's $300 million, and the North Dakota National Guard is a little over $200 million. So when it comes to military, it is not only a huge driver, but it's critical to protecting our nation, and that's why we lean in on the military support and appreciate the efforts of all those that volunteer for Task Force 21. And our space here doesn't go unnoticed. Mayor Ross has brought the Barksdale Trophy to showcase it here, something everyone in this community should be proud of. It's not a Chamber EDC award. It's a community award, and it really goes to show how this community supports military in a big way. I think if we could keep the award and there wasn't this arbitrary rule that you can't win it twice in a row, it would probably stay here. But it's traveled between Dyess Air Force Base in Abilene, Texas, and Minnet back and forth. We don't know what will happen if another community tries to win it. But it's not about the trophies, though. It is about how the community shows up to support military, and I just want to give accolades to the community as a whole in that space. When we look at the Task Force 21 efforts, though, in 2024, we had 85 in-person and virtual strategic engagements. Minnet Air Force Base Leadership Tour, which involves 623 North Dakota legislators from across the state, we found it amazing that there really wasn't a full understanding of the role that Minnet plays to protect the nation with being the only installation with two legs of the nuclear triad. We also had state officials and Washington, D.C. leadership on that, that tour and mission brief. We hosted 90 senior military officials as part of General Bousier's Warfighter Leadership Conference in Minnet. We attended four senior military leadership ceremonies, and we had 15 North Dakota representatives at the Vandenberg Space Force Missile Launch that actually took place on Election Day this year, then been a part of numerous Sentinel briefings and discussions. We hosted the first Nuclear Triad Symposium in North Dakota with over 250 attendees, where we had to shut off registration due to space capacity issues. And we hosted our 13th Annual Nuclear Triad Symposium in Washington, C.C., exceeding the capacity of the facility with 200 attendees. We do this because it's important to advocate and educate because we have some major challenges ahead of us. In 2024, we saw the Sentinel Program actually receive a congressional breach, the Numa Kurti Breach, that put that project on halt. That is something that is very, an area of focus for ours that really made us lean in on why it's so important to be present and at the table. With that, after that took place in January, July 8, Congress certified the program and said it will move forward. But everything we were briefed on earlier, we, the community as a whole, is being looked at. This program is being reset. There's an effort to look at it. Are they going to do the original sequence to this project? Are they going concurrently roll it out? We have a lot of work in this space to prepare the state and our community for Sentinel, and we're going to lean in heavily there, and there's been a lot of engagements. But as you guys have always asked, too, what are the challenges? That's a challenge when Congress pulls back a major modernization project like that that's so impactful to not only the nuclear deterrent but also our community. And then also, we partner with other communities. We partner with Grand Forks and Fargo and the North Dakota National Guard to host a North Dakota Military Reception each year in Washington, D.C. And then we have two members of our committee, Task Force 21, that serve on the North Dakota Military Commission, which is 100% focused on making North Dakota the most military-friendly state, whether it be bringing additional licensure compacts forward, which we're seeing a couple of those float through the session this year, or working the top 10 Department of Defense list of what are those priorities that make our state military-friendly. There's a lot of efforts that go under Task Force 21. And then as we conclude, before I stand for any questions, I just want to share a couple of comments that General Bousier has shared, and I believe it's on the next slide. I think it's important to note the why behind what we do, and these are a couple of comments that General Bousier, who's the Commander of Air Force Global Strike Command, four-star commander, that shared in a public, multiple public settings. "Whether it's Task Force 21, or our industry partners, or it's our congressional leadership, or just great Americans that are interested in the nation's most important mission, thank you for taking time to be here." And this is from our symposium in Washington, D.C. "But I'm going to ask you to do something. Every week, engage with someone who doesn't understand what we do and the importance of it, and spend three to five minutes having the conversation about it, because I would offer you this. The mission requires it, our nation needs it, and I think it would help. I truly do." And that's what we do with Task Force 21, is we take that education effort and task from General Bousier seriously. I also want to share this comment because this was, again, a comment made in Washington, D.C. with other communities that are part of Air Force Global Strike Command there, number of leaders from across not just our community, that we had a very small number there. But this is what he said. "Why do I think this is the most important mission being performed at the most important installation? I offer to the airmen at Minnet that they perform the nation's most important mission at the nation's most important Department of Defense installation because it's the only installation that hosts two legs of the triad, both the air leg and the land leg. It is the center of gravity in my world." Pause on that. "No other installation on the planet has that responsibility. I would offer to you where Minnet goes, the Air Force goes. I would offer to you where Minnet goes, the department goes. I would offer to you where Minnet goes, the nation goes. No pressure." And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Barca.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number, oh, go ahead, Scott.
Before we move on, since we're talking about miscellaneous discussion, I'm having a little bit of second thoughts. I would like to make a motion that the Minnet City Council opposes any North Dakota legislative caps on our budgets or property tax.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion and a second. Discussion.
One of the reasons why
Go ahead, Scott.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're okay.
One of the reasons why I'm bringing this up is I had a note here from the North Dakota League of Cities for our 2025 legislative priorities. And under property tax, they have strongly opposed legislative action that would inhibit city leaders from planning for future growth. That was under planning and zoning. Under property tax, it says, support tax policy that allows local elected leaders to respond to the needs of their city residents. I would have never believed in a million years that I would make this motion, but I do believe that government locally making decisions is the best. It's not for the state to make the decisions for us, and it's not for our national leaders to make it for us. So that is why I'm making that motion, and I do believe there are other stance that we need to take. And I believe that later is too late. I believe now is the time to tell them, we need to go in a different direction, and you need to go in a different direction. And they have more time to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike.
Scott, would you, would you consider an amendment? Just to clarify what we're actually asking for. I guess what I would propose is that we have Harold working with the PIO office to draft a letter that would be signed by the council if we so agree. That would outline that. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Any objections in second?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue.
Go ahead, Mike.
You know, just one other point that I didn't make earlier, and I think it's maybe a good time to make it now, is that one of the, one of the other big things that I told that committee when I was in front of it was that the only real path to lower costs from a tax perspective and lower property tax, lower sales tax, whatever, whatever it is that you're looking for, is electing people who care about doing exactly that. Because to me, the, as Scott so well put it, it really isn't up to the state to fix this for us. We have to choose to do this locally, subdivision by subdivision. We have to decide what level of service we're willing to provide and at what cost. And that does come down to the seven of us sitting here. That is our role. And the people elect us to do that, and then if they don't like how we did it, we don't get to do it anymore. That's the way that works. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's my hope that we can bring that message to them. And again, I think it's, for me, I'll support the motion because I do think that it can make a difference. You know, I'd like to think that we, this is a spot where we could choose to be a leader, and maybe a few others would follow us. You know, the League of Cities may not be comfortable doing that as a whole yet, but I think there are communities that are ready. You know, one of the ones that was thrown out during one of the other pieces of testimony, think of this, you know, we've got a big enough budget, we could deal with it, right? If it's the law, it's the law, and we're going to follow it. We'll find a way to make that work. What do you do if you're a small town like Anamoose, where it's not a matter of 3%? It's, we might have to quadruple it for a year, because we've got to buy a piece of equipment. Like, it just, it just doesn't make sense for a lot of communities. And so it's my hope that if we did take this step, that we would have others that would follow us, and they'd be willing to come alongside and say, hey, this isn't the right way to handle this.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. You know, I've been sitting here listening to both sides. I've heard yours and Alderwoman Olson's talking about waiting. I've heard Mike's and Scott's. I guess ultimately, for me, I think the state realizes that they have to do something with property tax. But I, I fully agree that they can't limit the cities in what we can do in our growth. And I, while I appreciate yours and Lisa's comments, I don't know that there is a time that's too early or too late to let them know. If they're going into these sessions right now and they're talking about what are the best things, if they can come out of session knowing that cities don't want a cap, maybe they won't put that as one of the major bill components. So I think I'm going to go ahead, and I'll support this.
Mark.
I think that it's true that, you know, there's some problems with a 3% cap or even a CPI plus 2% cap. I don't, I don't think the peanut butter spread works across every size community. I think there's a, there's a concern that's been stated by some that, you know, all that does is mean that every year, there's going to be a 3% increase in everybody's in the budgets. And, and so, so I'm, I'm willing to vote for this motion. I think just, I think, I think, I think the legislature is getting some pushback on the cap approach, or at least that they need to modify it in some way from, from the flat 3% that is in the main bill. And maybe getting, getting some additional input at this time isn't all bad, that they, they realize that that's kind of a sticking point.
Okay. Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally am opposed to caps. However, I don't think that it's right tonight that we drop this political bomb without hearing anything from anyone else in our community. We have public hearings, we notice everything that we ever vote on. We put an agenda out so people have the opportunity to speak to us. And now tonight, out of discussion, we're creating a motion that sends a message to Bismarck, representative of the almost 50,000 people that live in Minnetonka. And I don't think that it's right to not give them the opportunity to tell us what message we want to send to Bismarck. So I can't vote in favor of it tonight. If we want to have it on our next agenda and give people the opportunity, and they are overwhelmingly wanting us to send that message, I can support it at that time, but I can't tonight.
Any further comments? Any further? Well, I just think, I mean, this is really the reason why we debate. It's the reason why we discuss. It's the reason, you know, it's the reason we're all elected, you know? Do we want 7-0 votes all the time? That's, that's not realistic. But to have this idea exchanged up here in public, I think, especially on this topic, is very healthy. So I am going to vote in favor of this, because I think it's, I, I agree. I mean, if they're going to craft a message, if they're going to craft something down in Bismarck, the input from the City of Minnetonka is what we're going to vote on right now. So, are we going to do roll call?
I can start a vote.
What's that?
I'll start a vote.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. If there's nothing further, please record your vote.
Motion passed with a 6 to 1 vote, dissents from Alderwoman Olson.
Moving on to item number 11 on the agenda, that's Liaison Reports. We'll start with Lisa.
To pull it up here real quick. All right. On December 17, I attended the Service Base and Planning Council Executive Board meeting. On the 19th, Central Dakota MPO, and then we had a special council meeting that afternoon. December 27, we had another special council meeting where we met with the legislators. January 9, we had a special council meeting. Coming up this week on the 23rd is the January meeting for the Central Dakota MPO. The 27th, the Committee on Childcare will be meeting, and the 30th, the Service Base and Loan Review Committee will meet.
Mike.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My one report is from the Minnetonka Commission on Aging. We had a meeting last Friday. One, one thing that I wanted to note, much like we had Bracka here tonight to give her presentation and update on the good work that they do for us, and the money that's being spent on behalf of the people to do so, I would, I would actually like to see us do, do that as well with the Minnetonka Commission on Aging, MACA, the others that we are providing funds to. Because I think it's important that the community understand where their, where their tax dollars are going and how they're being used. And as an example, you know, if we could have Roger here from the Commission on Aging and have him present sort of a year-end, they do that during the budget cycle, I know, but also, I think, much like the EDC did here, I think it'd be good to do that. One thing for the public to understand, the Minnetonka Commission on Aging serves seven counties, and we serve more meals for seniors out of the Minnetonka Commission on Aging than Fargo does. And that's crazy when you think of the size community that Fargo is and its surrounding areas. And so I think it's important that we tell these stories. Now, you know, certainly long-term, I would love to see the Commission on Aging transition to more and more private funding. They do a great job of that today, and we have a small portion of their budget that comes from the city. But at the same time, we also want to highlight when we're doing good things with the people's money. And I think it'd be good to have more of those reports.
Thanks. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one of the committees, the Economic Development Review Committee, have been meeting regularly, a lot of good conversation. I think we're through all of our presentations for the most part at this point. Now we're going to kind of get into the, into the meat and of what those programs and those partnerships look like going forward, and if there will be any recommendations that will come to this body. Renaissance Zone was rescheduled and as well as Visit Minnetonka for later this week.
The only things on mine that I didn't touch on in the mayor's report, Task Force 21, and Mark, if you're going to touch on that, go ahead. And then just recently, the Chamber Board of Directors. Scott.
Ward County Planning and Zoning. We've been working on the ordinance, well, I guess they've been working on it for many years. We may be getting close to the end of that. Since I've started, we've had a special meeting to go over that every month, and then the regular meeting. In February, we're going to have three meetings. And in March, I think it's March 20, we plan on presenting that to the townships. So I believe that we're getting close. From what I understand, and I will put a kudos to Beth Peach, Ward County Planning and Zoning, kind of spearheading this, we're looking at giving that to Ward County Commission in July.
Thanks, Scott. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. We had a Liaison Committee meeting last week and heard a presentation from Dana Larson, the engineer at Ward County, about the study for the west, southwest bypass, which is interesting. There was a handout, which, which we can get to you if you're interested in that. But this is kind of a long-range process that will evolve over probably the next two to 10 years. And then we have an MPO meeting coming up this Thursday at 4:30. And I would just, don't forget about the Legislative Forum at 9 o'clock this coming Saturday out at the Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Mark. Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Scott said, we had two wonderful Ward County Planning Commission meetings this month, discussed the ordinances, and then had the Library Board meeting. We discussed budget items and some other things about fees and different things like that, which was a good meeting. And then I was unable to attend the Ward County Emergency Management Committee, so.
Anything else to come before the council? Seeing none, we move on to item 12, adjournment. So moved. We have a motion, but Paul is there, second. Second by Lisa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good meeting.